Augur Harris.
Here.
Augur Johnson.
Cars and issues reports, I already have anything to report right at the moment. I go to the police and fire for my spare Anderson.
Have Jeff here to give the fire report. You know anything about the fire?
No, sir. Send me out reading for you.
No, I'll tell you what, I don't have it. Take a day. But go ahead for the police report.
We need to approach the man.
Oh.
We'll get it here. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. As far as the things that happened here in the past month, officers had a good month working with traffic enforcement again. Traffic crashes are down. We just had two this past month. Another update on the digital radios is you'll find in the report, right now, we have taken all of our radios back to rear communication and they're reprogramming them, sending them back. We're being towed possibly mid-May is when that project will be going. The 2014-15 DOJ grant is now closed. We have made purchases of the AR-15 rifles and the five tasers. Our men have now been trained with them, they're carrying them now. If you see the yellow gun on the side of them, that is the taser and they have those. That is the grant which was seventy-five percent feds and we, our park was twenty-five percent. So, we spent a total of twelve thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and the city's match was thirty-one seventy-one, which I'm taking from my budget. The 2014-2015 GHSO claims have been made, most of that was in time. We've already started making some purchases. I'm gonna have to submit a grant modification on this and because not everything we had before was tied in America and that's something you have to do with that grant. So, we're gonna, one of the things we're putting in there is body cameras for our officers. They will actually attach to the radios, so their microphone will be a body camera. So, we're not adding another piece of equipment to them. Their microphone will actually be recorded. So, we're adding that to us. That will probably start whenever we get the new radios and I get this modification approved. I have applied for two more GHSO grants in which I know I'm only getting one. One of them is to buy the hardware, software and things like that to get us going on e-citations. The other is for some other equipment that is starting to get older, like we've got a couple of radar units that's got a few years on. They're still certifiable and they're still, you know, calculating those or working with those each day, so everything's going to do with that. As far as meetings next week, we mentioned surplus in the cars and Gut Deal will be here Monday and we will meet with them. They're actually gonna, they're wanting to train us to be able to put our own items on and so they will be here Monday for that. I'm gonna try to meet with Ms. Susan Ashley next week. I have the paperwork back on some of the LESO projects that we're running now and we can get those titled into our name. And so I'm gonna meet with her next week to go over that. And the other thing is the bike rodeo with Safe Routes to Schools is May fourteenth. Let me double check the calendar, please. Yes, May the fourteenth and fifteenth, that's a Thursday and a Friday. This is the first grant we applied for with Safe Routes to School in which we had about twenty-five thousand dollars for education. We did the safe walk to school back in the fall and now we're doing a bike rodeo. We're actually through this grant, it's purchasing ten bicycles to, that the school will keep and where they can continue to teach the kids how to safely ride a bicycle. It also provides for education for the PE teacher and things like that. I've already sent to the principal today the permissions with, that they have to sign. It's a whole harmonious agreement with the city as well as with the state of Tennessee and these contractors we bring in to help teach the class. And, but this rodeo will be going on, it hopefully at Station Park. If we do not have any, any running, we're gonna close the lower part of the parking lot and the children will be riding the bikes in the parking lot. And I told them we couldn't turn them loose on all the trails, but if we wanted to take one trail to the house and back out, that wouldn't interfere with our walking paths, you know, that much. So, we have that going on, a lot of, a lot of things going on, a lot of good things going on, so. We will have the second, third grade at the park on Thursday and the fourth and 10th grade will be at the park on Friday. Each grade will be there for about an hour and a half to an hour, two hours during this training. Any questions?
Kick ball?
Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that up, 'cause I've tried to touch base with one or two of you. As you know, the project is going on with Wataki now and they've lost their playground, they've lost the ball field in the back and their question to me the other day was, is could they come down King Street and play kickball in the back lot at the fire hall? Of course, I told them I'd bring that up to the board, see what, you know, how you all felt about that. They, they don't have another place to play is, is the reason they're asking. They, they have already looked at scheduling, they can't do this every day for the simple cost of it and the bus drivers, but they're also gonna be taking kids to the park. They're gonna try to plan special events, kinda like bike rodeo. I think somebody's trying to get, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, so they're trying to get two or three things because the kids right now, their PE, their PE is in the inside.
It's outside on the parking lot area.
Right, and they can, they can have some outside time in the parking lot, so. That's something, I'm not asking for a motion from you all now, if y'all would think about it later on in the meeting, if, if we could come up with something for me to tell them.
The only question I got is, I got the insurance.
And, and I, when I was talking to Tom earlier, we talked about that and I don't see why we couldn't sign something, you know, stating that, you know, you're liable for watching over your kids, we're just allowing you to use this and, you know, the county takes precedent on everything, but it would be no different really if they loaded the bus up and went to the park, is, is kinda how I look at it. That's just me.
As long as it's covered as a school function, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, it definitely would have to be a school function because, and they would just be coming down, probably one in two classrooms, it wouldn't be.
You know, we were talking about possibly putting in the wording that we would require them to provide adequate supervision.
And they would have to do that for the principal letting go out, so that wouldn't be a problem. So, we could, I mean, myself and Kelly or maybe someone else could come up with something that we sign back and forth with each other, just with an understanding that, you know, this is not a park, it's an open field and, you know, you're at your own risk.
I probably need to check with T M L, 'cause we've had insurance for them to play at the park, because of the middle part, but I probably just need to shoot them an email saying that this is what we're looking at.
Right.
Make sure that, that we don't need an insurance policy like a rider or something saying that, you know, they're.
Kind of great idea.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally, I, I don't see how it's any different than having a pancake supper on there and the kids crawling along the fire engines or playing out in the back chasing each other. I don't, I don't see there as really that big a difference, but I just understand.
That's a city function.
What?
That's a city function where you have supper. I, I mean, that's a school function, I just want to make sure, I don't leave first on if something happens, I will be the first guy.
Yeah, I understand. I understand what you're saying. I don't know what time, I mean, they don't have your work plate hall right now, what timeframe we're looking at before we talk to anybody.
Usually I can email them, they email back the same day, but usually with your own.
Chief, we had a gun a little bit while we got Chief Reesner and so.
Well, just to say that would be good, that way if we have to get something signed through the schools, I can take that to the school board first.
So, everybody up here is okay with it, might we get something approved? Okay. No, I'll go after the last and ask me if you know anything for the last. You'll go in and do, chief, then we'll go back to me in a second.
Okay, Chief Reesner, could you give a report?
Yes, one of the calls so far was twenty-six. There were seven extra fire calls, sixteen medical calls and three Miss Landings, which Miss Landings has mostly treated them. In the city was fifteen, outside the city was eleven. What fire call we had in here was actually grass and two grass calls, the rest of them gone out of the city. We had two that we mentioned last month that went to Bell Huffle, they went to twelve, thirteen, fourteen to the fire academy and made it back okay. I was there lined up, I don't know when the, when they take the firefighter one test, which could be a nice pull, they tell you where it's at, if you wanna go, you wait to the national, so it could be them out at the end of the year, but they enjoy it. That's it for me. Or any questions?
Good.
Good.
One thing before the next, I was asking, chief, did ever catch the, the guy who was loose somewhere?
Call New York.
Where?
New York.
Call him in New York?
He took off.
Public drive since.
Did he run that forward or off the way?
Might run out forward, I don't know.
Started off as a racetrack in Academy, New York, that's a pretty good distance.
We almost run out of real estate.
Excuse me. Give everybody a minute, look over the minutes of the regular city meeting of March seventeenth. Also a special call in pending on March thirty-first. I'm making a log of the past, March seventeen, three minutes.
I got a comment or a question. My, last week was talking, or last, on that, on that particular meeting, which was then two meetings ago actually, we talked about the billing permit, excuse, billing permit fees and it seems people that are out of order, if you look at ordinance twenty fifteen one-on-one, am I missing something? Did we make a motion to table that, didn't we?
You know, go take it back off the tape, it passed out in the first room.
The question will be maybe nine.
Oh, and for that reason, I understand. Okay, thank you.
All second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
It's going to the special call in, March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I make a motion to pass these minutes, mayor second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
What's going on, planning the zone, the zone, Augur Harris?
Well, we've got a new business coming in, we've got an antique store up here where the old soft depot is. We've got another business that we're gonna be discussing at our next hearing on this Thursday, as a matter of fact, pertaining to cooking in a restaurant over here, we go canvassing a lot, and that's pretty much what we're planning.
Sounds good.
That'd be real good, yeah.
Sounds real good. Anything else?
No.
I need to ask a question, 'cause I got hit by four or five people outside of me that I wouldn't aware of. What type of ordinance was the planning board and planning and zoning board bringing up parking cars in yards?
That was something that Chairman Olson, who I remember was looking at, it's pretty much not applicable.
Okay, that's what I was looking at. I had a lot of calls about people, so I was, what are you doing? I didn't know much about them, but, all right, thank you. It's going to park somewhere, Reesner?
I've had a Easter egg hunt last month, had a hundred sixty-two kids and I think everybody enjoyed it. This year we did add employables and a few other activities. I know Pete brought the Hummer out for the kids just to sit on and see what one looks like on the inside. We are still working on the movies in the park and I have just emailed the, the new pavilion specs to, to our engineer to double check if I can have him sign off before we proceed with going any farther, so, that is it.
What is that, this, to the theme, Joe?
We propose to go on the backside of the walking trail, basically in the woods, directly behind the house, be it not an empty area.
That's the yard area there? You're back further than that.
Way back, on the backside of the trail from there, several hundred yards from there, but in the general area.
Yeah, so if somebody was gonna get married in that area, they're gonna use that, that pole, that, use that.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
It's going to utility, Augur Harris?
We've had several gas calls, and then I want, one of the squeaks, before it's fine and.
That's one of them, you did?
Yep.
There you go.
To our surprise, we're finding that somebody put a cap key on there, but caps are used for water instead of gas.
With the gas line?
I have a new one. Yeah, and we're still having some problems with the lock lock metering station, the sewer station and everybody else. We're still working on that, trying to find a resolution to make the lock on thing work right. Right now, it's not working right. If we put in forty gallons per minute, it works fine, you get over forty gallons per minute, it starts to leak well. We're still, we should work on that. And that's pretty much it.
So, with Heath here, I, I kinda did a little looking around the business area, there's at least two places where there's no sewer tops. Caps are down off the cleanup.
Okay, and the council district?
One's behind the grocery store, one's behind that place. The whole cleanup plus got.
Coming out of house?
Were you stripped the cleanup off, the cleanup, to clean it out down in there? When it rains, it's like a flood coming out in there. I noticed in the last rain we had, I don't know what kind of implication it has on our bill, but I'm sure that, as far as me goes, I know I'm paying for it and I'm sure that we are all paying for it, but.
Yeah, anything goes down that way.
I don't, I don't think that's our spot, we're just from the takeout, aren't we? Wouldn't that be even clean from the take to the house?
I'll tell you what, it's cleaned out.
I don't know, it's right next, it's right next to the lid. It's the cleanup, you know what I'm talking about?
Just go ahead and clean out for it.
Yeah, I know, I, I know I'd be paying for it, but I'm not, uh, deceived, but still be using water on the other rails. It's going to be, I answer, Augur Johnson?
All the account balances are in really, really good shape. As far as what we're looking at is taxes, it will not come in yet, about twelve thousand dollars from child taxes, which isn't real bad, but what do we do from here on out? Do we send a reminder every month or how?
Yeah, we sent one out twice already, and then she sent one out this past week. And are you receiving?
Oh, since, okay, boy, my number is a few days old, so, from last week, so we may be under ten thousand by now, but I have been working on trying to come up with some monies for, for paving and hopefully the early May will have us a budget workshop. And that's all I got.
Okay. Our city attorney, our court, is not here this evening. We're going to our city reporter, Kelly Roden.
As far as mayors come in, so I don't actually have anything of our comment, and one of those things I do have interest in. It's going to the public hearing, this will be a public hearing ordinance number two thousand fifteen one-on-one, the building permit fee statute, we've already had one reading on that. I make a motion to close the meeting now for the public hearing, mayor second.
Second.
Meeting will now be open for anybody that has any questions on the building permit fee statute. No questions? Make a motion to open the meeting back up?
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Going to home business, this is ordinance number two thousand fifteen one-on-one, building permit fee statute, I think, so if I have that in order, I know this is the second reading. This will be the second, final reading. Anybody have anything to say about that before we pass it?
Looks good.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept ordinance two thousand fifteen one-on-one, mayor second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Next thing on home business is ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash one-on-three, board work sessions. This is the issue that Mr. Harper had brought up last month. Anybody have any questions on this? Pretty much leaves itself to have a meeting when we would like to, without violation of order. I make a motion to pass ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash one-on-three, mayor second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any questions on that? Well, just, I know it's, you just asked, but will this be posted anywhere? I mean, if you know you're gonna have one like tomorrow or Friday or where the public can, no, we couldn't.
We're against the two heads in the dance anyway, isn't it?
That's a workshop, right? This is actually a workshop, I don't, you don't necessarily have to post that, but we.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you're already gonna plan and contract it when I'm getting that.
Got a special call in, you always have to post, I don't have a problem posting it myself.
I just wondered, I don't know.
It doesn't specify in the ordinance it'll be posted at any certain time, but it can be posted.
At least maybe over the front board out there.
I can have the work actually sent in.
I've never noticed they have to post them, 'cause I know we know by ordinance, but I don't have a problem posting it, maybe four or five days before and if anybody wants to attend.
I mean, the odd thing is the workshop, but to say if it's, has to do something with the system, it says it merely can't talk, no comments posted, oh, no systems comments, and actually you're kinda stretching the sunshine off, or getting close to it, it might not be, but if you're gonna hold meetings just when y'all won't do, and I know it says no deliberation to vote, but I'm not gonna put a question in there.
Of course, unfortunately, it's always been this way, but it's just letting you have the liberty to do it.
Yeah.
But it would be nice if it was posted.
I don't have a question.
I, I don't have a problem, problem posting it, I mean, I'm sure anybody up here does. I mean, we normally post it where the post office and where do you post it at? Where do you post the record made?
The records.
No, no. Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that at all. It's not in.
What you just posted, oh, we just posted on the side, I said. We've got letters put on the side?
Can have any sign?
I'm supposed to have Donnie Miller fixing it up, I haven't heard from him in about two months, but. Are you just putting it on the front door? Okay, let's go on to new business, ordinance number two thousand fifteen one-on-four, compliance manual title six of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four. I think this has to do with our manual, am I correct on that?
This is our, yeah, this is our title, our title six information that's, we've always followed and we just never been policy and we need to put in place for our rights.
Make a motion to accept ordinance two thousand fifteen one-on-four, this is the compliance manual title six of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four, mayor second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Next thing on our new business is resolution fifteen dash oh-one, authorizing the insurance of interest bearing emergency rescue vehicle captain outlay extension notice series two thousand fifteen. I think most everybody knows what this is. Anybody have any questions on that? This is our extension of our captain outlay doggone rescue unit. Make a motion to accept resolution number fifteen dash oh-one, mayor second.
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Next thing, quick presentation, people aren't here, so we'll go about that. Charter change to discipline policy, I'm not aware of what that is, so I'll let Kelly maybe tell me what that is.
What that is, I didn't bring my notebook in to, to help the department heads out.
Well, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah. I've got an email sent in to get the package of what it takes to, to do the process, doing the charter change, because it has to go through legislation.
Okay.
Legislation.
That's from Derek. That from Derek?
Yes, yes. So, I guess I'm making a motion that the board approve the process of a charter change. This would be possible.
Well, we don't have anything here to prove yet, right?
No, I'm still waiting for that information. I'm asking for permission to start the process. Oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
This is to get the information for us to pass, right?
Yeah, see if they got it, they'll be pretty good, yeah.
Okay, it's fine. Everybody was fine with that, so, um. What's going on with special census?
I'm trying to track down the group that helped us do the special census the last time, I have not come up with a name yet, but we really need to do one, 'cause I'm, I feel pretty confident we're somewhere missing twenty, possibly fifty, but I think we're probably missing twenty to forty thousand dollars with our census being out, 'cause we're still at the eighteen hundred something mark and we built a lot of homes and a lot of people's moved up here, so I'd like to say just do some special census. Now, the last time we did it, when we couldn't get some particular cards back or filled out, we, actually the fire department ended up doing it door-to-door to get the rest of the information filled out. Once we get it, do it, then we need to figure out a plan how to get the, the cards filled out to the people that does not seem to be, but I'd like to start that process.
When do they, when do they open that for the census? 'Cause it used to be every five years, have they changed it now?
To be honest, I don't like the last time we did it.
It used to be every five years before we could turn one in. I'm all for a duty, I'm just going to duty if we're five years away.
The last one I know about was done.
Two thousand eight.
Well, between oh-four and oh-eight, somewhere in there.
The special census?
But it's still at eighteen hundred something.
Eighteen seventy-four.
I mean, we were more than that.
They went down last time.
Yeah, which is, I don't, how do you go backwards? Somebody else, either those or, or everybody's getting out of my, one of the two, or both of it.
Actually, we went down the last two times. The one time we did, if they didn't give us half of what we had created before, we lost a ton of that.
So, I mean, there'd be some costs associated with it, there'd be some posters and things like that and I don't know if it's greater than National Council or who it was that helped us with that, I'm still trying to find that information.
Last time, the first time we done it, we had, we named, we had, we named one person on the street, if it was a large street, for example, like Barlow Lake, we had like three people on that street, that's street leaders, and they, they took care of everybody, five or six houses, and they, that next three persons took care, and that worked pretty well, that was the first one we did. And after that, we never could get anybody to volunteer to help.
Then after that, we never could get anybody to volunteer to help out with that. We had the newspaper people helping us one time, and that worked out pretty good until we turned it in, they denied about half of what we turned in, so... What we need to do, in my opinion, is, is finding three or four people that's dependable on each street and get them to help us with it. There's always somebody on the streets that's willing to help out, as far as just their next door neighbor.
Well, like I say, we can work those details out, I just want to get the process down, and then we'll figure out how many we got to go out with.
I don't have a problem with it, because I would like to find out when you can turn it in, though, because there is a certain time, it used to be every five years, have they changed it?
We're trying to figure out who to contact, um, I put a message in to Intex, asking what agency to contact to do the special census. We just have no background.
Was it the US Department of Interior or something like that we had contacted last time? Okay, I mean, I'm all, anybody that gets, trying to do a census, I'm all for it. Make a motion for it. A motion to re-try to do it, find out when we need to do it and how to turn it in. It's a good idea. I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Buddy Petty proposal, I wasn't here for that meeting, I'm sorry, everybody else was, so... If everyone wants to open up on that.
Well, this is when he came up to that workshop we had, uh, in the, well-
First workshop.
Special call meeting, seems like we did both, uh, about the Metro contract, and he, he spoke before the meeting, and this is his proposal. He's, as you see, this is a thirty-five hundred dollar proposal, where we've already actually paid for half of that, where all his help, uh, rules for Metro with the new sewer contract. And what he's gonna do is basically a past five year, a current and a future five year analysis of the sewer system. And to make sure we're gonna meet all of the elements over the next five years, make sure, uh, we're covering all the costs, uh, what we need to look at, what we're planning for upgrades and updates and all that.
He also does rather cities local, and he's in the know about this, I think this is a good deal.
So I'm making a motion to let, uh, Lady Petty continue to finish the process, or do the sewer evaluation.
About to say thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
All second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Going to Utility Department's phones? He's not here, we're saying no, everybody know, we talked about-
We talked about that today, the special, you wanna tell them about it? Mike, phones that were on in the house, we called- Actually, Kelly really knows exactly. The phones were wanting to give the utility department, so we could call them, instead of having to come up and do the computer-
This was the, no, you're on the hotspot.
Oh, hotspot? Oh, I thought this was-
I don't know anything about phones, well, from our meeting, from our workshop that night, uh, Mike went by the Verizon place and got us the package information and everything, but we hadn't been able to get, we hadn't had time to work on that in further.
Well, you know, I know that we discussed in there that sometime you can have a phone and it creates a hotspot, if they had phones, then they would have it, so I thought that's what it was.
Well, and we, we, what we did find out, and they call that tethering.
It's called tethering, and it's a lot more expensive.
It's actually better to have a little portable hotspot.
How many?
So-
Little portable hotspot is like, it's a lot cheaper and you'd be a whole lot more better.
And I thank all of our city phone dealers, still the flip phones, you know, if we were to ask for, even though both Heath and Keith have transferred their calls to their smartphones, we would have to actually purchase smartphones to city workers, and that's gonna add a thirty dollar per phone call, probably, per month.
It's gonna be more than that.
That's just for the phone, it's thirty dollars a month.
I did not come prepared. I did not, I mean, I've got the notes, and it's smart.
Because one thing we got researched is governments get a Verizon discount, and I, we hadn't had opportunity to look that up, but I wouldn't like everybody's permission, I mean, this is just some crazy number to upgrade their phones, and so we can have a portable Wi-Fi system, so the guys can work from out in the field and do their work orders and that fine stuff, because right now they have to drive back to either the police park or the fire, or the-
How many phones are we talking about, Ted? Are you asking to upgrade the phones, or are you asking it to do the Wi-Fi itself?
Whatever's gonna give us the best package for the money.
Well, we're not gonna get the best package for the money through Verizon, I can tell you that, if you're going, if you're looking for the Wi-Fi, are you talking about Wi-Fi and a computer on there also, or are you just talking about actual line covers for the phone? No, no, the Wi-Fi is specifically for the computer itself. Verizon, I promise you, I'm on top of this stuff, Verizon's the highest, and they don't care as much, they don't get near it as much.
I get unlimited for thirty-nine dollars a month if they qualify for it.
And is that what?
Unlimited for thirty-nine dollars a month.
Where's that?
Verizon.
Unlimited internet?
Yes.
Unlimited internet through Verizon?
It's, it's through the government package that you're talking about.
Well, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty new, that really is.
No, it's been going on for so, uh-
There's gotta be an offer, unlimited package, but it's not a government-
Well, it's government, it's his government, so we had it when I was down-
You're talking about minutes, everything.
That's, that's the Wi-Fi.
Gs, everything.
Yes.
The hotspot, that's what you keep going.
We, we had one.
I'm all in favor for that program, if they got that, so thankful to anybody else.
I've got the man's thing, but you do also, we can call them, and I'll just get it done and do my part, and that takes care of that.
You can't beat the SG. Okay, nobody has a problem with phones, Ted.
What did we find for a good package, doing an upgrade, utilities, yes?
We're pretty much new. Well, I don't know, we're gonna tear it out.
It cost us not to have it.
Are we gonna look at, buy, I know Heath right now's on a computer, are we looking to buy another, I know you said two, are we gonna buy another computer?
Well, not a computer like we got for Heath, it'll be a simpler, addressed down laptop for what Keith is gonna need. We're talking about like, probably a three or four hundred dollar laptop for him.
Maybe a new for him nowadays, three, four, I don't know, I was actually looking at it the other day, too. Just to break up another question, I'm, I'm making a motion to accept the phone proposal from the Utility Department, I hear a second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We got anybody interested in a part-time job, I know I had several people contacting me, have you already got, how many applications do you have on that?
He's already done.
Already done?
Would you say utility worker or-
Yes, not a part-time, no.
He hired, uh, he hired Roy.
Brewer.
Brewer.
Loyling Brewer, out of Springfield.
On Monday.
Okay. All right, it's going to Cross Guard replacement for two thousand fifteen sixteen, um, any update on that?
We, we didn't receive any applications, uh, on every, yeah, last time.
You run center, right, it was not approved.
So we need to, we need to repost it now.
Can I make a motion to repost it until we, so we don't have to keep doing this every, I make a motion to make this an indefinite motion to-
You just want us to post it?
Until someone's hired.
Until somebody's hired.
Is it bad to hire it someone, I mean, I see some, excellent, I travel throughout Metro all the time, and there's some wonderful people out there, they're entertaining as well, you know?
He, he entertained for twelve hours, yeah.
I don't know how they do it, you know? They have a lot, they are excellent. Oh, yeah, I see them everywhere. I need to get, I need to get them on film, I'll show you, they're fun.
All right, going to schedule the workshops for May. I'm waiting, she's looking at her calendar over there.
Did we vote on crossing guard?
They don't have to vote, they're ready. They're ready for indefinite, so if somebody was hired.
Aye.
Aye, everybody aye, we're all good.
Take somebody a second.
Yeah. Okay. Workshop. The next meeting is May the nineteenth. So, Monday, the eleventh. Anybody have objection to that?
I don't ever know, any, any day, I couldn't tell you for sure, I would think so. Monday, the eleventh?
Monday, the eleventh.
Seven.
You're okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
We're gonna have to try that, first reading, the May meeting.
Yes, okay, yeah. Um, okay, so how about Monday, May eleventh at seven p.m., six p.m.?
Shoot, five.
Which one's better for y'all, six, seven?
Seven, ain't a matter of here at six.
Okay, seven p.m.
All right, just going to the gas house.
Uh, I'm just gonna make everybody aware, I don't, I don't know if we need to make a motion or not, but obviously, we're looking to tear the house down, it's, uh, you know, the fire department's using it for training. Excuse me, that's right now, it's kind of a haggle, the way it's set, so we're, they'll be looking to use some of the bulldozer from the LSO program to, uh, to push that down, so I don't know if anybody should. Do we need to make a motion to push it down?
Um, yeah.
But where, where's the gas house?
At least the water tower, it's open, I don't know what.
I don't know.
Okay. It's not that one that we're, we told them to tear down their house, I mean, we're not tearing somebody's house down.
No, city house.
Anyway, I'll make a motion that we, uh, demolish the gas house and push it off the hill, or dispose of it, should say.
That's, don't that house have a vice, man? I've been there, it's like, several times.
It's more like crawl.
You mean, that's a vice, I mean, like a cellar, I mean, down there.
Yeah.
Surely, it doesn't have any paint, except, they, that's just a sort of thing.
Uh, he, he made, Josh made a motion, I'll second, all in favor of tearing down a gas house?
Aye.
All motions, carry no opposition. Any citizens' comment?
Before we move on, I need to, uh, I guess, do we need to make a motion to add to the agenda about the surplus equipment? I'd like to make a motion to add a surplus equipment to our agenda.
Second.
Can I take this in, all in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, up the city shop, I know, uh, Chief White's got, like I said, the gov deal's got coming out Monday at ten o'clock, uh, we've looked at this, another promoter tractor that's been in the city's possession for, I know, a minimum of fifteen years. We don't need this, it's just taking up space, and we're gonna look to sell it, now, these weren't put on the, the first surplus list, but Heath has come up with some things that we would like to add to it, just, uh, some, absolutely, as they have been cleaning out, they have found that we weren't aware of the last meeting, or whenever it was voted on, and we'd just like to hear about it, so...
Make a motion that we add all this surplus?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
Because I didn't know what we had, and it's coming Monday, I, I got three things, I know, the big one on surplus.
Smooth you live.
I'm making, I'm making a motion to add, you're talking about three things as well.
What are your three items?
I got, uh, uh, old hand-held radios, that's obsolete, also, a, a radio system that's still over in the shop, that's a Motorola, it was acquired in the, I'm gonna say late eighties, it's, it's no longer, but I've heard it's worth something, because it's still got the tube type, and that's what they all, I don't know. Uh, and also, uh, uh, the old education equipment we've got, it's leaning in the cornrow firewall now, it, it started when we did, which is in early eighties. I think the jaws are good, they weigh about a hundred fifty pounds, and the spreaders, but I think the motor is not working, but, and we have two of us here besides that, but that's, I believe, I probably have more, but that's all I think of right now.
And are you surplusant or sal, sal? Surplusant?
Surplusant.
Make a motion to add the fire department surplus equipment.
I'll second.
Tom, are you making a motion of this kind?
Oh, I don't know.
No problem, I'm all, I'm all in.
I'm all in.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we put a minimum on this, uh, I know we did with the police cars?
Oh, we did?
We did not put a minimum, okay. As far as the tractor stuff, I didn't know, I, I've never dealt with the guy, as far as, I don't know.
We, we can put whatever minimum that we feel, I mean, with, with these two cars, I feel that we probably ought to put a minimum on.
And then we'll leave advise you, or just-
If it's okay with the board, I'll send the advice to Joe Dale's as well as Kelly Bluebird, we haven't put any things like that.
This is tractor, I remember, it's like a two thousand dollar.
No, no, I don't think this one, this one's been around since-
This is not the old orange one we used forever?
They said four, no problem.
Yes.
Yeah, it's either ninety-eight or two thousand, pretty sure.
I bet you put that with a backhoe attachment, nine and ran.
And that, that is something we discussed, we're gonna talk to him about, uh, a package deal, which is the tractor, the front loader, and the backhoe, uh, obviously, right now, it's not assembled that way, it's just a tractor and a front loader, uh, putting the back, basically doing a package deal for everything that goes with it, because it's gonna be hard to sell a sweeper attachment, a three-point, it's kinda obsolete now, so... I think we'd be better off with package deal, I'll, I'll consult whoever we deal with, who deals on what things we're gonna do, but I, I don't know.
So you're talking about tying the first three pieces up to it? All in one, tie it all together?
Yeah, basically, the first five, I'll just put those together, we've got a belly mower, or one is a Vico, which is a finish mower, uh... I don't know the last time it was used, I know it was just a good buy-in moment, which would be a long time.
Who all cannot bid on this, we cannot bid on stuff that comes down here, is that correct?
No, with our city, yeah, something like that, but not our city.
Actually, you can, as long as you're not at work when you do it.
How random?
Not, like Jeff can, but he's on movie.
You can actually bid on this if, yeah, I, I could bid on it if I went, if, I know you can do that, I will, right?
I wouldn't ethically bid on anything that's, myself, I just wouldn't do it.
Well, when it's out, and the highest bid that goes in wins, your bid, if you win, is at least one dollar, five or fifty dollars higher than someone else, is that not true?
I, I totally agree with you, but ethically, you're digging hope for yourself, that's just my opinion.
I'm saying, how do, how do we determine when we're on the clock?
Twenty-four seven.
That's what I'm saying, technically, we can't bid then. We can't. Uh, as far as your questions are, I, to be, I've talked to Heath about this, I've called, uh, my contact at, uh, National Tractor, he gets to make it between, without even looking at it, between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, with the attachment, and none, my, my, uh, nobody's, I hadn't seen all this stuff.
Yeah, I saw it.
I'm glad it's there. I'm not gonna take this guy, I'm not gonna hold him to it, uh...
I think you're in the range, Joe.
That guy, when he comes Monday, he'll have his laptop or whatever, he'll bring up everything on there, he'll take you with him, what's closer around here is just, be close to what we got, so he'll take you that way, or, or-
He will give me a range on the police car, where if we wanna drop a minimum in there, where you can't go below thirty, three thousand dollars, and that's where it starts, he, he will give you good advice as to what to do.
Okay. Anything else, can I spell the surplus? Okay, citizens' comments, is anybody having comments? You gonna wait a long time for timing, I should've let you go right off the bat, go ahead.
Uh, I, I spent the last five months out of the country, and I didn't, I don't know the updates of East End Road. The last, the last time I was here, the update was that it, that was, it was open for bid as far as paving, two streets, one was East End Road, and when I returned- as far as paving, two streets, one was East End Road, and when I returned, the potholes are even bigger because of this severe winter that we've had. What I did was I measured from the beginning of East End Road to the beginning of Davidson County, and it's not even that wide. So, what is the status and when do you expect to start paving?
Mr. Harris has been working on bid of different projects as far as trying to put together, accepting bids, and last time I heard it was May, am I correct, or when you, somebody's going to come out?
We've actually had an engineering firm, not, not drawings that I developed, but a real engineering firm develop drawings and specifications, which will put together, you know, a real bid, and so they're asking for proposals.
Yes, sir, so that's four hundred feet is what you're talking about, from that point.
And that's, to me, that's not a whole lot. Not, not all. So, what...
As of right now, you're, East End and Barwood, two roads, we're looking at paving still.
So, when do you, when do you think it's going to get started?
We're still working on that, because we have some other issues that they have to go with that, a part of that road's going to have to come up.
Good.
Because of how bad it is.
Right.
But we have some other issues that we're working out between Barwood and everybody else before we actually get a final paving bid on both sections.
So, when do you think that you're going to give a bid?
We're probably looking about, probably start the bidding process next month.
Okay, okay. And so, what's the, what's the bidding process? How long does that take?
Well, we have to get the bids, and the bids come up here, and we have a lot of work that we have to do on Barwood. We have to change out some culverts and stuff like that, and so we have to get that done prior to doing any paving anywhere. Because when we bring the company up here in order to do the paving, if we have a lot of paving before, we want to knock it all out at once, because it's a lot cheaper for us to do so that way, because they don't have to keep bringing their equipment up here like, you know, each and every time, and we need it, we can do everything all on a section. That's what we're trying to do, but we do have a lot of issues over on Barwood that we have to address, such as changing out culverts that are totally rotted out, stuff like that, so we have to get that portion of it done first before we can get the paving portion of it done, okay? And that's what, what the paving bids are all about. And then we might go ahead and, and issue to where we can go ahead and get paving bids, because we'll be pretty close to, being close to being done with the Barwood issues as far as culverts, okay? The bids will come back to us, okay? We'll talk about it, we'll vote on it, and take it from there.
Okay. Have you run to any issues on East End? Have you looked at that as far as any problems?
The engineer has looked at it, and as far as me going out there and looking at it, it, the last time we did it was, was a year ago?
Five months.
Well, no, it's probably two days, I guess.
And that's how I would say it, five months.
Okay, all right. There's no issues like there are on Barwood that? No, 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 nothing like what's on Barwood, Barwood and... You're underplaying to be paid, that's what we're starting to say, we don't know exactly. Hopefully, it'll be this year for sure.
That's what I was telling you, oh, okay. Soon, so I'm just wondering.
And actually, they had done for last fall, or well ago, they did, they were trying to do something.
We can't ask the paving crew to come up here and pay four hundred feet and get a reasonable price, so what, what he, what he's giving, we've got a sewer issue waiting on here back from TDEC, as soon as we get that, which we're three looks away, or two looks away, as soon as we get that back, we can submit our sewer plans, and basically on Barwood, we're wanting to cut the street, and before we can cut the street, the exact location, we have to get approval. So, we're going to do them both at the same time, we're actually looking at more than those two, we're trying to financially work it out, but I, we're going, like you said, we're going to try to do it all at once. We're kind of burning to the fire until we can get some answers back on our sewer system before we pave anything, or before we can approve any paving, so that, that is the whole of it.
So, we've got the engineering done on it, all the engineering is done, now we're going through the TDEC process, okay? We have to turn the plans into TDEC, and if TDEC accepts those plans as far as Barwood and everything else, then that's when everything starts. Once we get that permit back from TDEC, then we can proceed and go further.
And that'll start within three weeks, you said?
Uh, we're, no, 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 don't get me wrong, don't, don't, don't hold me like this, okay? The thing is, is what I'm saying, is we'll get the, the plans back, or the permits back from TDEC at that time, then we can start the sewer portion and the culverts and everything on Barwood, okay? Once we get that. And we're not going to do any paving or get any bids until we get that portion of it done, and then we'll get the paving bids. And then after the paving bids, then that's when we'll decide how much money we have to do all of this paving, and then it'll come to this board and we'll decide what's going to be paid, what's not going to be paid at that time. But, but we, we had a process that we had to do, which is the engineering of it first, now it's a TDEC portion of it, and then it's going, the bid portion of it, and then the final completion of it. You've got different steps you have to go through, so as far as the timeline, you know, so, TDEC can take thirty days, they can take longer than that, that's the state, unfortunately, we're under their thumb right now, pretty much. Okay? Any other?
No, I'll just be back next month, too.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll have some better answers for you, hopefully that'll be back, and I'd get you a better timeline at that time.
Thank you.
Right now, I can't do anything until we can actually get that permit back, I'm just saying.
Okay, great.
Any other comments? I'm making a motion, please, I'm here a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.